In the court is for its best for our community and our fellow citizens. Amen. For the pledge, please. Pledge to the flag of the United States of America. To the Father, who we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to let you know that we do have two of our commissioners that are on by phone, and that being Commissioner Pierce and Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Pierce, can you hear us okay?
I can hear.
And Ms. Baker, can you hear us okay? Ms. Baker? I see you. If somebody would just reach out to her and maybe she has to unmute herself or something like that. Y'all just give me a thumbs up. I'm gonna keep moving, okay? Y'all just give me a thumbs up about Ms. Baker. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna address item number two, which is Department head reports and plans on the code enforcement. King Crulick is the director. I see here that it's gonna be a written report, but he's making his way to the podium, so I guess he has something to say. Yes or no? All right, I'll let you go to the podium and maybe there's something maybe one of the commissioners may want to address to you, and I'll let that be. I want to also let the board of commissioners know that here first and that I want to identify the commissioners that are online first to get them opportunity to speak on things on their own, anything that's on their agenda before any of us. So Ms. Pierce, do you have anything for Mr. Crulick?
I do not.
Uh, Ms. Baker? Okay, we'll get back to her. Uh, Mr. Powell? Do you have anything for Mr. Crulick? Okay. And, uh, for some. Ms. Crulick, I think you all seem safe unless you got something you want to just tell us tonight.
Thing really to add more than what's in the report, except I do want to just point out one thing that is interesting that the amount of development that's occurred, not just in Warren County, but statewide, has been pretty, pretty high increase. In fact, looking at a lot of my colleagues across the state, everyone's been seeing in the last year or so, a much greater increase in the number of permits. So just as a point of reference, when I did this report two years ago, our total number of home permits were 670. So obviously, this is 730, it's a slight increase. But in terms of permits overall, that's looking at your building trades, building, mechanical, fire, plumbing, electrical. Two years ago, that number was about 1,500. And you can see in this one, we're looking at more than double that.
Yes, sir.
So obviously, there's been a great increase, I think because of the economy turning arounds. And I think in the last year, even with the pandemic, people stuck at home realizing they've got a lot of projects and maybe a little too much HGTV watching. So we're all seeing a big increase, and that's been a plus for the county.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you. Yes, sir. All right, um, next is Ms. Charlotte Duncan, interim director for Economic Development Board. Okay.
Hi, good evening. Would you like me at the podium or?
No, that works for you, but we'll do with that, okay?
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So at the Economic Development Office, we have still been handling our public interaction by appointment only or over the phone. We are having some meetings in person and of course virtually. I do have office support with me on Monday, Wednesday and Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This is a program that we're partnering with Cooperative Extension on, the National Conference and Center on Black Aging. And so this person is answering the phone and assisting with department tasks, like updating our visit NC database, our sales tax data tracking, some filing and organization and tasks like that. For, in, in looking at new and existing industries, I think you know that recently we have a new feature on our website where we are able to specifically narrow down the ADPNC's property database across the state to Warren County properties that are listed. And so since I've come into the office, we have listed three properties so far. The former Just Save, the former IGA, and the former North Carolina High School Building. We have received our award letter for Project Mulch and the waterline extension project, which is set to result in the creation of six new jobs. I believe Macon has talked with the engineer and they are ready to start that as soon as we get the official go ahead. But we did receive that award letter from the state and we got the grant for $115,000 for that waterline extension. Of course, we have Ken, Ken and I and Planning and Zoning have been talking with the folks at the Chateau at the Lake project and those discussions. I've continued my work with Project Bridge. This is the IT company that wants to expand into Warren County from Greenville, South Carolina. And you, of course, approved submitting a building reuse renovation grant to NC Commerce. And so I am working with them still to get that submitted and we hope to meet the January deadline. Been working with some landowner and housing development companies. I have done a site visit to Southmore Elementary since my last report, as well as a Macon assisted living facility with a developer prospect. We've been doing ribbon cuttings and visiting businesses and continuing to update databases in our office that are out of date, including our heavy industrial directory and our housing database, mostly for multifamily dwellings. I do want to add, since, since submitting this report, we have submitted in the last week, week and a half, four RFIs for our Triangle North Warren site. So one of which was a direct request from the state for us to submit. And I was also able to work this week with the COG and with Jim Rand, who's the lawyer for the Triangle North Board, to renew our new cost option on two parcels for our 860 acre mega site. So this includes our 169 acres with rail access and the adjoining 520 acres parcel below that. We have our rounding out our existing industry survey that we launched. This will end at the end of the year, so if you're a small business owner or business owner watching from home, please go to our Economic Development website and click the link to that survey. We continue to serve on the COG's Standing Loan Committee meeting, uh, committee, and we encourage all businesses to check out the Open for Business revolving loan that uses CARES funding. There is still funding in place for this. One Warren County business has received a $15,000 loan. We're moving forward and working to square away things with our Frontier Warren partnership with the town of Warrenton. Been working with Fidelity Investments on some partnerships around virtual learning and the Boys and Girls Club. Of course, continued to work on the countywide broadband initiative and doing some work with the COG around economic recovery and resilience, more to come on that. And if you go onto the second page of the report, we've been doing, participating in conversations around the S-line corridor, which is the rail corridor that the state is starting to develop. But obtained a commercial appraisal for our historic county jail and looking at potential economic development options for that building. And just a quick update under grants, we did not receive the $150,000 NC IDA ecosystem grant where, for Frontier Warren that the town of Warrenton was the grant lead on. Been attending some community meetings and working on tourism and development programs, including updating our tourism website. So if you haven't checked that out, please visit that at warrenton.com. And that's it, unless you have any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Pierce?
No, great report though, Charlotte.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baker?
No, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Powell? Okay, and Commissioner? All right, thanks again, Ms. Duncan for the report.
Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna move right on to item number three, which is Consider Request for Support of Hollowasaponey Tribe in Efforts to Gain Federal Recognition. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I was, of course, contacted by Chief Richardson and, just for the background, of course, the Hollowasaponey Indian Tribe was recognized in the state of North Carolina in 1965. In your package that you, that you have here, you'll see that there was a letter addressed from the council, tribal council, to, to us, asking us to for its support. To support them for their federal recognition. Of course, at the end of the, the request, they're asking for a, a meeting with us. But I take it in, in parts first. I, I believe that this is, keeps going out, something that we should support. With that said, is there any, any commissioner has anything they want to add to that? Without objection, I'll move forward with another request. Commissioner Pierce, anything?
I don't have any objections to us supporting their request. And the only thing that I would ask is that whatever information was missing from their initial request to be recognized as a federal tribe, is that is included with this new request so that it's, the additional information is provided. But yeah, I have no issue with Warren County supporting their request.
Baker?
No problem at all, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Powell, this is in your district, so, huh, yes, are you okay with that? You, you okay with the, with the request? Okay, good deal. And, uh, Mr. Hunt?
Yeah, Thomas, support of a lot of support.
Okay, all right, so ladies and gentlemen of the board, they are asking for a meeting with us. And if it's okay by you, Mr. Jones, I'm asking if you will put this meeting together, maybe by Zoom for us? And Ms. Baker, would be, would you be okay with, uh, by Zoom, meeting with maybe the tribal council by Zoom and myself? Is that okay with you?
That would be fine.
Okay, Jones, if you would, before we write out a letter and request, of course, they set up some type of Zoom meeting for us and, of course, yourself, and Mr. Kingsbury, would you be included on that for us, please? All right, and is that okay with the board members that we set it up that way? Mr. Jones?
Sure, I think the chair, we can absolutely take care of that. I did speak with the tribe and because this process has some real specific way they need to go about this process, the chief has been designated as the spokesperson for the tribe to help them through this process. And they will give us some directions on what we need to include in any letter of support that they're looking for.
Okay, that sounds great. I, I just think that we should have a little more dialogue with them, so just an initial meeting, that'd, that'd be great for us. You know, just, just let us know on their time and to set up some type of Zoom meeting that we could just get some of the stuff back. Please do that, I appreciate that. And we'll definitely do that, so. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, are there any other comments? I'm moving from there. All right, thank you so much. All right, we're gonna go to item number four, which is Set a Public Hearing Date for February 1st, 2020, to consider changes to the setbacks in Lake, uh, Lakeside Business and Neighborhood Business Zone additions as recommended by the planning board. Mr. King Crulick in the planning zone, I guess, has some information on this.
Yes, thank you. Everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
So at our last commissioners' meeting, we had taken a look at an amendment to ordinance regards to height, and we closed that out by the action by this board. But initially, this proposal came from the Eaton's Berry Estates subdivision to add some modifications to setbacks, which really is a separate issue. So the planning board also, at the same time, when they moved the height setback request and also alternative that I presented, the setback request from Eaton's Berry Estates was on lakeside business for any buildings that are over 40 feet in height. I think it required 100-foot setback from all property lines. After some research and discussion with the planning board, it was decided that that would not be appropriate, but under the PUD CR as part of the conditional use permit provisions, having a required 75-foot setback from all exterior property lines, but just for the PUD CR in the lakeside business district. So that is what's before you as the request for the public hearing.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Pierce?
I don't have any questions or issue with the February public hearing date, so I'm okay with that.
Commissioner Baker?
No problem.
Uh, I do have one question, and it does, uh, sign of mine. With these setbacks, uh, does buffers included in this? Because I, I think that during our discussion with solar farms, we discussed, you know, different, you know, buffers being in place, whether vegetation or some, some type of structure to set aside. Is, is this any consideration in that, please?
Actually, buffers are already requirements within our zoning ordinance. So there is a requirement between adjacent land uses, that there is a requirement for a vegetative buffer already. So within this setback, if it's staying, if it's staying at the current 50 feet or if it goes to 75 feet, there's still a requirement for that buffer regardless, and that goes within that setback area.
Okay, well, you know, we, we're dealing with trying to, you know, separate the two. And we know we deal with vegetation, uh, some, some vegetation, of course, takes a long time to mature. So what I'd like to see is something that kind of like sets it apart a little bit earlier than waiting 10 years for a buffer to actually be in place or, you know, grow to that height. Is that something that we could consider?
Certainly, we can take a look at that, yes.
Okay, would that be included in the, I guess, the, the public hearing or how does that work?
Well, it would depend upon the verbiage of what we're trying to actually propose. If it's very extensive, that may have to go back to the planning board for them to be able to tweet the language to make sure it's appropriate. If it's something which is minimal, then that's something which we can just include within this particular amendment.
Okay, well, my, my only request is between here and there, can we get some, you know, I guess some literature and some type of, uh, maybe a better understanding about what could possibly be put in place while we're considering this setback?
Certainly, yes, we can do that.
All right. Ms. Hunt, you still like to add something? Good? Oh, yeah, all right, thank you, Ms. Crulick.
Thank you.
All right, so ladies and gentlemen of the board of commissioners, this is before us for the set this public hearing for February 1st, 2020. This will be an action item, so I entertain a motion to set this public hearing. Yes, sir.
Well, my thing says 2020, but we'd be.
Sure, I may have repeated what I saw, you're right. Is there a second? Sir? Is there one second? I'm sorry. Do you have a second? All right, Mr. Powell, second it. All right, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, apologies. And also, the, the agenda says 2020, and I may have repeated it, but it's 2021, February 1st, 2021. It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Hunt, seconded by Commissioner Powell that we set the public hearing for zoning for February 1st, 2021. And what time is that? Six, okay, that's our regular, uh, what we mean, at 6:00 p.m. All right, um, then further discussion? Here now, all the things I? Late motions carried. Thank you so much. Item number five, Set a Warren County Public Utilities Water Tap Fees to Increase. Mr. Macon Roberts, is that right there yet for Mr. Macon Roberts?
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening, sir.
I'm providing for you in the pack. Hopefully, rather lengthy explanation of my recommendation, active information that goes with that. Rather than me spending the time up here talking either, unless you have any question. Uh, possibly, you know, I'm gonna move forward. I would like to say, in determining the request, noticing last year's budget process through the fall quarter, that a line item for material supplies for Macon Water Tap tended to increase. And I continued to watch that in the first quarter of the fiscal year, and it did show an increase with the material costs specifically itself. Can you hear me? Uh, in doing that, I, curiosity got the best of me, so I did a survey poll to all the surrounding areas where, what their cap fees were. And once I did that, I noticed that it was all over the bowl, very price in the surrounding areas where we live. So with that in mind, I brought in the North Carolina Rural Water Association that offers member services that they'll call to do the technical research, like rate study and stuff like that. So in their findings, based on the material that I provided for them, they did write up the recommendation that I provided in your package, there's a sheet that's, entitled, at the bottom of the sheet, North Carolina Rural. And that is the actual cost estimate that they put together based on the material costs, potential labor costs, as well as, uh, equipment cost for the, that we use within that process. Now, those numbers, if you can see in that note, were based on the FEMA reimbursement rates or fair market price across the industry, so that's where those numbers came from. I know my recommendation in the right-hand, far-right-hand column of that report was a little lower than the actual recommended prices that they gave. Uh, in doing that, I do want to be fair to the customer and to citizens of Canada. If we are, you know, some of this cost is based on the employees, you know, doing the manpower work itself, which we are paying those on the Iowa rate anyway, so, uh, I just thought it was a level number in a mid-range of what the surrounding areas are, and it would be simplified, just rounding those to that middle range.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Roberts, you just hang tight a little bit, I'm gonna go through the board of commissioners on those concerns and we'll go from there. Commissioner Pierce, any consigns or questions for Mr. Macon Roberts?
I don't.
Commissioner Baker?
No.
Thank you, all right. And Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay?
If I'm interpreting this correctly, currently, for three-quarter inch line, they're paying 950, and to propose it is $1,200.
Correct, yes, sir, that's my recommendation.
Okay, and that's, that's about a 26% increase.
Yes.
And, just saying like a significant increase to me, but if that's what's necessary to, to keep the the enterprise functioning in the blood, and I have a problem with that, but 26% increase at one time, just saying.
Okay, yeah, if I could, and so these services really are gonna be for new customers to the system.
Yeah, I understand.
So it, it won't be impacting many of our existing customers unless they need to make some.
Yes. Yeah, well, I, I understand. I, I still, well, here again, I, I still think it's a significant increase whomever that has to pay it. I mean, and, and, uh, and so like, I guess my question is, if that's the, that's what's necessary, then I'm all for it. But if maybe there was a little bit more wiggle on there, that's what I would like to see. This.
Commissioner, may I jump in?
Yeah, I was gonna say, because I, I just hate to see water become a major liability to, to people. It should be something that's accessible, but at the same time, we have to operate as efficiently too.
Yeah, I, I got a question in regards to that. What is a, a new building requirement as far as tapping on to those, the system? I, I think we discussed it before, is it mandatory or, or if there are so many feet from a, from the waterline to have the chapel on? And how does that work then?
Uh, currently, the ordinance that we govern on, they give the fuel within a 500-foot threshold of a public water supply, you are required to connect to the can.
500 feet? Is that what you said?
500 feet, yes, sir.
500 feet?
That's almost two football fields.
Yes, sir.
Good. Of course, Dallas Cowboys had run a little bit of touchdown, so it counts for you.
I'm gonna try to stay on task with that.
That part of order.
Yeah, I hope that part of order is directed to you. Okay, that would not be the last of that one, my friend. But, uh, yeah, okay, um.
Are you requiring action on this tonight? Or just?
No, we really wanted to bring this to your attention. Um, if you have some feedback that we can, you'd like for us to take a look at, we can take a look at that and then bring it back to you for action. What's not really was to bring it to your attention for discussion purposes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, well, there wasn't any action on that tonight anyway, so, uh, I think, I think the request is to get this done, saw it in January, but it's not gonna hurry it in to push it back a little bit, will it?
Right, and we can follow up, but I think one of the driving factors that Mr. Robertson mentioned is that we have experienced a real significant increase in the cost of materials. And so we do, at a minimum, need to make some adjustments to.
So let me make sure, is, is that, is that what you're asking, Commissioner, now? You want a little bit more data to, to go with this or?
Well, how you wanna move on this? Right to at least digest it a little bit more, maybe in January, we can, we can put it on the agenda for January, if it's okay.
Okay, it'd be on for January for approval, right?
If, if that's what the board desires. Well, that's, that's what we intended for, is not to have discussion. We can come back at, at the next meeting or whenever you determine.
Okay, good question.
Yeah, I mean, it's still a little better, I mean, if we can, because if, if not, then, I mean, we can always table if there are any questions, but I think we can make this happen in January. Mr. Robertson?
Yes, sir.
These price increases, is that, is that related to the corporate situation for materials, or do you know?
Uh, all I know is, uh, if, if I understood your question, I'm terrible about hearing with these math, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Uh, the, I, I provided a quote sheet from the materials provided also in the package. That is the actual material cost of that, that, just the material, no label, no equipment charge, or none of that. That is actual, actual figure call.
Okay, what's driving the price up? Is that, I guess, up my, you know, okay?
I, I don't know. Of course, everybody likes to blame, blame COVID, and I know that if it was taking place, those numbers continued to increase. Also, Also, uh, it's my responsibility to make you informed.
All right.
In doing that, by bringing you these numbers, I feel like I've met my responsibility. What this board decides to do regarding that is certainly up to the board. Uh, I, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna be upset, so you give me direction. So, but if I didn't bring you this information, and no decision could be made either way, then I would not be doing my job.
Thank you, all right, I think we'll see it in January. Thank you, Mister Mike, Megan Roberts, thank you for your time, it was, um, all right, um, item number six, consider authorization for phone system upgrade. Mister Chaufer?
Good evening to the board and to all the president.
Thank you, sir.
As the I T administrator here in Warren County, first want to say thank you for the opportunity to work on a project this size, to get involved, to be able to make a presentation tonight, and we learned a lot, and, uh, hopefully, uh, we can move forward, uh, even further. We are getting closer to having, uh, this new phone system. So, uh, on the memo that was sent out, we have that, I won't read through all of it. Uh, just the scope of the project is to implement a telephone solution, uh, to better optimize our ability to communicate internally, and I would add externally as well, um, to help our constituents to be able to, uh, reach all departments through our in-office ability to transfer, which we do not have now. Uh, the phone system also allows to be covered under maintenance agreements, which covers all installed equipment and uses other support. As I read that and thought about it, that probably was not the overall scope, that was probably a bit detailed, it should have probably been under requirements, but nevertheless, uh, that's what it is. The summary of this, that this Warren County I T Department has sought to partner with a company that will help to enhance our communication capability, as well as leverage future growth of our phone communication system and offer a comprehensive service level agreement that will support the system as well as the county, uh, user needs. And so, if we see the recommendation of the company, uh, technology, business technology, that we are recommending to partner with, we had three vendors, Atcom Business, Team Logic I T, and Infrared Technologies, but based on uh, the number of years, uh, that Atcom has been in business, as well as, uh, some of my colleagues in I T ram, some of the surrounding counties, Halifax County, uh, Mr. Fred Lunt, uh, Franklin County, who are both, uh, directors of those counties. Those are the only two that they got emails back from, I did talk to some others who are using the system, uh, from Atcom, and I think you do have a packet that, um, back page, some of the counties, uh, that are using Atcom, as well as from Bureau, Randolph Hospital, and some others. So, uh, what we've tried to do is to just look at the, the vendor that most give us, uh, what we thought would be beneficial to us moving forward. You do see a, a cost in there, uh, a, a three-year, uh, lease with the dollar buyout, at the cost of four thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars per month. Uh, and in, you know, sitting and talking with the county manager, was trying to find the best fit for us, we thought that might be the best recommendation for us. And what that one dollar buyout does, is that at the end of that lease, if we decided to just, uh, consume and purchase the system to be our system without a lease, then we would only give them one dollar. Uh, and then we do have options of buying service level agreements or maintenance agreements going forward at about the cost of ten thousand dollars per year. So, uh, either way, uh, you would have, or want to have some type of maintenance agreement to help cover the equipment, uh, and to have people in place. Now, with the Nortel system that we have, and currently have about five different phone systems in the counties, and, uh, with, and I say five different phone systems, five different vendors. And so this project is to hopefully bring us into, we're all under one umbrella. We want, I look to bring in D S S, child support, or health department right now, they're in pretty healthy contracts, and we just thought it'd be best to wait till they got to the end of their contract, and then look to go then over into the Atcom system, which would also save money.
Thank you, Mr. Burwell, uh, Commissioner Pierce?
Definitely looking forward to moving forward with a county phone system. When I saw the numbers, I was hurt by them. So, Mister Burwell, you know, it was going in and out, so I couldn't quite hear, so this monthly fee right now does not include D S S in the health department? Is that correct, or it does include them?
It is correct, uh, they currently have, uh, their own contracts with their own vendors. And I think what happened in the past was that, uh, some departments might have wanted that a phone system sought out their own vendors, and that was probably before me. Uh, and so now, uh, again, we are just trying to.
So muffled, I don't know. Um, and so what other counties are using, like the Atcom? What other counties are using the phone system that we're considering?
That should be on the last page of the handout that I gave to you. Uh, we have, um, Halifax County, Lee County, Franklin County, Randolph County, Rosson County, uh, and Vance County as well.
Sir? I don't have it. I, I must be missing that myself, I don't have it. Yeah, I, uh.
It's, it's not in the pack.
I, I don't see that in my package, so.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
I can send that copy out to, to all.
Like I said, it's a heavy, it's a heavy price tag, but I think it definitely needed to go into the next century, you know, the next, we just need it, we're definitely behind with this. Um, it's a shocker, it's just a shocker.
And I will send you everything that your request, uh, Mr. Fred, Frederick Lunt, from Halifax County and Fort Worth, Franklin County, both gave me some references, uh, in my text.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Pierce, are you, are you done?
I'm done.
Uh, Miss Baker?
Most needed, so we'll just have to do the best we can with the price.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And Mister Powell?
Okay, Commissioner Matt? When we have the other three departments, uh, soon we're gonna have to negotiate a, a new contract, is that?
Yes, sir, um, as that time moves, we're, we're hoping that we'll be close to the end of our contract and the end of their contract, uh, D S S and health department, and then we will start the negotiation for all of the companies.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner, you have anything else to add? Mister Johnson?
Sure, thank you, Chair, I just wanted to say this is going to be a significant improvement. The past couple of years or so, we're excited to bring it forward to you all. Uh, one of our concerns is we want to try to improve our customer service, and right now, it hurts us, but when people call us, we can't transfer. So this will allow us that ability for most of our departments now, so we're looking forward to that. And thanks, Mister Burwell, for opening this forward.
Yeah, um, I, I do have to ask a question, I think Commissioner Pierce brought up a, a very interesting point. How much overage is this gonna be versus what we're paying now? I know, I know your services is, is not the same thing, I just wanna know the dollar amount. How much more is this gonna cost us, oh, we're paying?
Right, right now, uh, while we're in system, we are not doing anything, but as a system, Nortel is growing our business. Uh, we cannot get any maintenance contracts, nobody legally, uh, bind themselves to have any maintenance contracts on the system for a couple minutes out of, out of business. They don't make parts anymore, uh, if you find parts, you have to go eBay or where you can find them just to repair the system that we have.
Hmm.
That's, oh, that's what we're dealing with in all of our county departments.
And it sounds like your system has been in existence for, uh?
My, I'm at Atcom, been in business for forty years, and they've been.
No, our, our current system?
Our current system, it was here before me.
Oh.
Uh, probably it was here before Paul, uh, I'm not sure if it was here before Baker.
It's a long time.
And each department has their own setup, they have their own horse wheel, for those that do, they have their own haul handler. Uh, and this system will be centrally located, one central server that will be housed, we're looking at the place to house it right now. Uh, but that'll be housed, and we will have access as well as twenty-four seven maintenance from Atcom for any issue that arrives. Training is a part of this, uh, as well as all of the maintenance costs.
Right.
Is a part of this contract.
So basically, we, we don't have to send those to get, you know, all right? Probably still, huh? All right, look, uh, sounds good, thank you for the update. Mister Jones, I think you had, you had some of these.
We, this was something that we anticipated, so you all approve funding in the budget at the level that we, we have.
Great. Sounds good, thank you, Mister Burwell. All right, I guess this, does this need approval for January? How does this work?
Oh, just something you, you just gonna have, you can take action in January if you like, but it's, uh, requesting authorization, because the three-year contract is over by, uh, the word, so we do need your approval for it.
So I try to be, uh, do you need approval tonight to move forward? We can have it on January for approval, okay, so without objection, uh, for any board of commissioners, we'll just move this to an agenda item for January for approval. All right, thank you, Mister Burwell, all right. Okay, um, item number seven is coronavirus relief plan update, Mister Jones, you have the floor?
Thank you, Chair, I will be very brief this evening, I just wanted to bring to your attention, uh, that you all know we receive funding, uh, through the state from federal dollars, for the coronavirus relief funding, uh, we received approximately nine hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, of which twenty-five percent was for our municipalities in the county. We have done a good job of making sure that we stay on track with spending, and, uh, at this point, with the money that has been provided to the municipalities, as well as the supplies, equipment that we have bought, we have spent down about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which leaves approximately six hundred thousand dollars, and, uh, we have to spend that by December thirtieth, but we can use it for expenses from March first all the way through December thirtieth. And so payroll expenses qualify, and we will be able to make sure that we spend, expend these funds by the end of the year, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Sounds good.
Any questions?
Is there any question for Mister Jones, Miss Pierce?
No, so, but we can use it for like additional ambulances and whatnot, is that something we're considering, or no, we're not really? Is this part of the money we're gonna use for the hazard pay?
So, uh, yes, is so the, the bottom line is, yes, we can use this money directly, or we can use any savings that we generate from using this money.
Okay.
And if we use the savings, then we have more flexibility to, uh, uh, take care of items that we have a need for here.
Okay, Commissioner Baker?
No questions.
Yeah, excuse me? And Commissioner Matt, all right, thank you, Mister Jones, um, good update, all right, um, ladies and gentlemen of the board, we have on item number eight, Mister Preston is not here, uh, due to some, uh, unforeseen circumstances that he cannot be here tonight, so we're gonna skip over that one. And, uh, we're gonna move right into, is Miss Beverly here, Mister Jones, for item number nine, or the eight one?
She is not, this is a project that finance needs our work on, if you don't mind, I'll just give you a brief overview, and that'll be our last time.
I'm sorry, sir?
I said that they are not here, and so you now give you a brief overview, if you don't mind.
Oh, no, I don't mind at all, thank you.
Yeah, so. So this is a not item that we have been working on for a while, and this one is, as you know, our cruel system for our lead bounces. We have been manually keeping account for, and so we have now finally automated that process. And so our enterprise resource system, which is what we use for payroll, uh, and for our finance operations, our finance department had to get some additional training to be able to work, uh, these modules that we will be using, but with our pay devices that will go to our employees and staff for December thirtieth, uh, those paychecks will have the automated approval bounces on those paychecks going forward.
Great, great, great. That's all you have?
That concludes my comment.
Okay, all right, uh, again, ladies and gentlemen of the board, you will see that there was a closed session, and that was involved, and Mister Preston, he is not here. So we're gonna move that to, uh, uh, a January meeting, or probably further out than that, um, if we choose to get to a work session. Uh, before we, we close out, but this is a last business that we have on our agenda, so I'm just gonna check back the commissioners and see they have anything further before we move to conclusion. Commissioner Pierce?
Um, going back up to item number nine with the payroll accrual, will that also include comp time, will they see that on their, um, pay stub as well?
It's my understanding that will include comp time as well.
Commissioner Baker?
No, no questions.
All right, Mister Powell? And Commissioner Matt?
No.
All right, um, ladies and gentlemen of the board, that's gonna actually conclude, I just got a few updates I wanna put out to you. Uh, we're looking at, of course, today because of inclement weather, we have to suspend the, uh, the, the gathering down in, um, the community center for the hollows, funny track, uh, track opening there. Uh, right now, we're looking at Monday at three P M, Monday at three P M. Uh, but does that work for most everybody for Monday at three P M?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, we'll look to have that, if, if this end up being anything different than that, then, of course, uh, we'll, we'll get something out. Mister Jones, before we close up, y'all have anything that you wanna add before we close out?
No, sir, thank you, I just like to wish you a happy holiday season, and, uh, we'll, we'll see you back in a minute.
Right, well, this concludes our twenty twenty, uh, official meetings for this year, it's been a very interesting year for all of us, and, uh, I think collectively, we have done a successful job in, in conducting business here in Warren County. Once again, Mister Jones, a hatch off to you, to you and your staff, and what y'all have done, Mister Kingsbury, uh, I don't think we've done soon this year, so we think we've done pretty good, uh, but really, um, just ask everybody to have a very safe holiday, uh, be careful, um. Uh, please adhere to the, uh, conditions dealing with, uh, coronavirus, um, they're rolling out the vaccine, but, uh, it's still, we're, we're a long ways away. So let's make sure that we follow the proper protocol that's set by the, uh, the health department and things going forward. Uh, with that said, don't have anything else, so I hereby declare us adjourned, y'all have a good night.
Good night.